The time is 6:30 and we will call the regular board meeting of the Charles City Board of Education to order and have roll call please.
Dyke.
Present.
Walker.
Here.
Frisbee.
Present.
Maycomber.
Here.
Wintering.
Here.
All present and accounted for. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Are there any changes, Dr. Cox?
I would ask that number 11 be removed and pushed to April 13 through April 27. Since we have a rather full agenda, that's something that we can hold off for two weeks or so.
I'll make a motion to accept the motion. Accept the agenda has changed to remove number 11 back to.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda with the removal of number 11. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Walker.
Yes.
Frisbee.
Yes.
Maycomber.
Yes.
Wintering.
Yes.
Dyke.
Yes. Motion carried five to zero. Agenda item two is to welcome the visitors and have public comment. As we begin our agenda tonight, I'll explain our process for public comment. The board will hear comments from the public in conjunction with each agenda item using a structured process. As board president, I will ask for comments when we reach that item on the agenda. You will be asked to approach the microphone, state your name, and limit your comments to two minutes. At this time, I invite any member of the audience to step up to the microphone with comments about items of interest or concern that do not appear on tonight's agenda. Please begin by stating your name and contact information. It would be appreciated if you would limit your comments to two minutes so that we can keep the meeting moving in a timely fashion and allow others an opportunity to speak, as well as allowing the board to complete the full board agenda in a timely manner. Comments from the public are limited to matters within the board's authority. Please understand that we as a board cannot discuss items not already on the agenda. Iowa sunshine law prohibits us from having a discussion without the proper notice to all of the school district community that the issue would be discussed at tonight's board meeting. Also, please remember, you are making comments in a public meeting. Should you make comments that the subject of the comments considers to be inflammatory or libelous, you as an individual may be subject to legal action brought by the subject of your comments. Thank you for your support of our school district. Are there any comments by the public this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item three, comments by board members and superintendent. Dr. Cox, would you like to start us off?
Sure, thank you. We meet with NIAC staff this Friday regarding our career and technical education programming as well as potential career academy concepts. I want to remind people that tickets are still on sale for this year's Driving with Jazz. The concert will be Thursday evening. KIMT aired a story tonight on our geography bee winner, Tyler Wilkin, and they are coming back to cover two other stories later this week. From Des Moines, the legislature remains gridlocked over school funding as well as the start date, and we're hopeful that the two issues will be resolved by our next meeting on April 13. And then finally, along those lines, Representative Todd Pritchard is going to be speaking to school employees next Tuesday. That'd be March 31st at 5:00 PM in the middle school library regarding education funding issues.
Thank you. Any board members have any comments?
Just wanted to invite anyone who wanted to come. Comet Cafe is this Thursday, and you just call the high school and make a reservation. I'll see you there.
Thank you.
The only comment I have is that Dr. Cox went as my guest speaker last Tuesday to the Kiwanis, and I got a lot of good comments.
Very good. Anything from this side of the table?
I accompanied the group that went to DeChora to look at the food service program there in DeChora. They do a phenomenal job there. They do everything internally. They do a lot of growing their own crops. There's a lot to aspire to in the DeChora lunch program. Much too, much so.
Anything else? Hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item four, BLDD designs update. We don't have Jean with us, so you'll have to introduce yourself.
Oh, the mic. Sure, yes, that's fine.
First of all, I am John Whitlock. I'm a principal and owner with BLDD Architects. I'm here on behalf of Jean, who unfortunately for me is on vacation, so good for her. So, yeah, she's, how do we wake this up? So again, I am working very diligently behind the scenes with Jean. I am a principal in charge of this project, overseeing the development of the drawings, working with Estes in terms of budgeting. Well, yeah, it was easy. So first of all, I'm going to just do a brief update of where we are and some specific items, go over some other things that are sort of major items that we need decisions on. If not tonight, very soon Estes will follow up with sort of beating that same drum. So basically what you see right here before you is when we talk about sustainability, we have to give our students the opportunity to be sustainable. And the idea of reduce, reuse, recycle, we want to make sure that they have the availability of places to recycle in. So what we're showing here, and I can tell this isn't on. Figure it out. Here we go. Oh, so close. Looked like it was on.
Here's one.
Green lights are on. There we go. Figure it out. Okay. So basically, you can see in the lower right corner, there are four different colors indicating the different types of recycling that can occur. There's paper, plastic cans, paper, plastic cans, and trash. I want to make sure that everybody understands that the normal trash bins that would be provided in a classroom, this is not replacing those. This is providing a larger trash area for those activities that we know will create a lot of trash. So outside the commons area, you can see that right here we have those two recycling areas, and then of course, right next to the serving areas, and you'll see that again in these subsequent drawings, that we're providing recycling right out.
This option is that this storage room could be removed and this storage room could be extended that would allow you to access a practice gym to those locker rooms through this portal, so you never really leave the gym. So I think that this layout, while we've provided to offer this one, is I think a much preferred layout in terms of providing access to a future gym and a current gym. As an interim, sort of a baby step in the right direction for the competition gym, we also looked at, okay, what if we kept, and what you're not seeing here is the locker rooms are still below the bleachers. So there are bleachers that are stacked on top of locker rooms, and these are the locker rooms that are on the hard lock room, the bleachers that are on the floor. So what we did in this particular layout is provide more room in the north-south direction and this direction, so that you've got this 16 foot and a half. In fact, so you've got a little bit more width in terms of the north-south direction.
Eight and a half feet, and that's some of the pricing that Estes will talk about. This doesn't increase the size of the gymnasium in that east-west direction, but only in the north-south direction. That's what it looks like in the competition gym layout, and this is what it looks like. And the reason for that spacing is actually here, the practice court layouts. This provides additional space. The current design only has about three foot between the sideline and the wall on both ends. This has increased that so that you've got seven foot between that practice court and the wall and between those practice courts. This allows you to extend all the bleachers on the west end, so you'd have that 800 sort of seats on the west side, but none of the bleachers on the east side. So again, you'd have plenty of, but it'd all be from one end when you were doing this type of layout. Is there any questions specific to the gyms that you'd like to talk about now before I sort of move on, or is... One of the things that I, yeah, go ahead.
I have a question, I guess.
Go ahead.
So in this particular layout, it allows for about three feet on the end lines. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. For the bleachers in the stacked position, there's about three foot. There's a little bit more than three foot, three and a half foot between the extended bleachers and those courts.
Can you tell me how many, each row, how much distance or space each row that you roll out would?
Twenty-six inches, I believe, is the spacing that we've gone for, yes.
So my thoughts, and I shared this with a couple, is what, you know, in this scenario, you know, the priority to me is the ability to greatly expand our options for practice, practice space. So seating for 800, while nice in a weekend tournament, you know, for, with the other option, we really aren't getting a lot, a lot more than the other option with, in the courts running that.
Right.
Same direction, yeah. If we went to the bottom one, the one that you had up, just to keep going.
Keep going back to the original, that one?
If we allowed, instead of eight rows on one end, if we allowed for, say, three rows on one end and maybe two rows on the other side, I calculated about 60 seats per row. Is that accurate?
That's probably, yes.
So we could allow for, say, 300 seats, room for 300 seats, and gain several feet on each end line.
True, absolutely.
And I guess when we get to the cost estimates per plan, that's, you know, what I had seen previously for cost estimates, this was the substantially cheaper one.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think what Estes, I don't want to steal their thunder and speak out of turn, but this increase of about eight foot in the north-south direction is like $280,000, okay? The cost estimates that we'll be talking about to increase the gym size to accommodate moving the, all the bleachers on the court will be in the neighborhood of $750,000, $850,000.
And that's what I had noticed earlier, is that large amount of money for the other one really didn't gain us significant amounts of seating within the cross-court option. About 360 seats in that one versus maybe 300 seats in another option here.
The difference provides you more floor space, and because we're using the area, the roof, basically the ceiling of the locker rooms, those bleachers never retract. So you're losing that floor space at the, not losing it, but it's not being used for gym. In this particular case, when you look at, oops, went too far, when you look at this option, is we can get the bleachers all the way out of the way.
Yeah.
And so that's just accommodating and providing more floor space.
As Jason mentioned, though, it is possible, though, then, for us to retract back to the, that it is possible to retract some of those of the upper and bring out some of the lower. That would be possible.
What this, in this layout, the way we showed, the reason we showed it is when you get the full extension of the lower bleachers, you can then access the other one. If you can't extend those all the way down, then you really can't get to those upper bleachers, but you wouldn't need it. But you're exactly right. It just would move the courts to the west, and then you could pull out two or three rows, four rows on this side.
And I'd noted earlier that, you know, with other conversations, if we were to have a, say, volleyball tournament with a smaller court, we would still be able to pull out more seats.
That's correct. I didn't really point it out, but you can see the basketball court outline. This is the volleyball court outline, so you obviously, at a 30 by 60 court, provides you a lot more room for bringing bleachers out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the things I'd like to talk about tonight and get direction on very soon, much like the competition gym changes, are alternate bids. I don't believe those have been discussed in detail. Alternate bids are what we use at bid time for work that is outside of the base bid, work that's not included in the documents. If there's money available at bid time, and usually what that means is bids come in so well that you've got extra money, you can incorporate or add some of these items. There's always two things to think about, really, and the one very most important thing is, is that these are items that you have to be willing to live without or willing to find other sources of funds, and we've talked about donorship, I know, for athletics items. So those are the two things. But really, if we do exactly our job, Estes is going to do their job, and it's going to come in right on budget, well, that means there's not additional funds to add these. But we would still recommend that there are items that we want to discuss that you'd want to have available to you on the chance that there are available funds, anywhere from $10,000 to $100,000. How could you spend that money wisely on this project? These are 12 items, and they're based on some of the smart choices that Estes has already provided and discussed with you. These are the ones that we would recommend that we would develop so that you would see pricing. I need to know from you whether that's, yes, we want to, or here's another one we want to add, that sort of thing. I can go through them. I'll do that quite quickly. Let me know if I'm boring you or if it's too much detail, but A1, these are all, I should also note, note that these are add alternates. The intent is, is that at bid time, there would be a cost associated with this, and if you look at A1, it's $30,000. So that would be an add on top of what the base bid would already be. So skylights in the gym, why do that? So you could save energy on lighting during the day. The idea being that you can use that as a part of your daylighting system, so there's a benefit to the owner over the life of this building. A2, operable glass, operable partitions. Very expensive, but you've seen it in some of your tours at different facilities. It provides the openness, provides the connectivity that we're looking for inside these classroom and learning areas. It's also a passive security system in terms of being able to be in different areas and still be able to see everywhere. So it does provide the teachers and staff, you know, a little bit of additional security to see what's going on in all the nooks and crannies, but it also provides that openness and connectivity that we're looking for in terms of the learning environment. The bleachers, the next three items are all athletic items that we've discussed identifying for fundraising. So that's the reason they're listed here, and it's the bleachers that are basically on the locker rooms, the athletic equipment and the athletic lockers. So those are all identified there. There is the south connector road that would go along the east that would connect the visitor parking entry area to the middle school around to the existing south side. So that would be the road that would connect those two entities. Number seven are sun shades for the storefront windows. These are aesthetic. They provide visual beauty to the building, but they also provide a physical function in terms of blocking glare from sunlight, so they do provide function as well. Resonant flooring in the locker rooms. Right now, the base bid is for sealed concrete in those locker rooms. This would be for an improved floor surface that would meet the demands of a locker room floor. Again, not a big price tag, but something that we may want to consider. Amplification system within the labs, this is a teacher-owner request. We have amplification in certain areas already. This would include every learning space within the building. Number 10, making sure I haven't skipped any, is additional sound absorption panels in the gym. Right now, what we have will be very adequate and be satisfactory for your use and function of the gym. This would improve the sound levels even more, so it's something that I don't believe is necessary in the base bid, but would be something you may want to consider. Completion of the sidewalks. The sidewalks in the project right now in the base bid provide you, where the kids get dropped off, access to the school. This would be increasing sidewalks to get walkers to the school or bike riders, would extend those sidewalks to the property lines. Right now, that's not in the base bid. And the last one is motorized window shades, which again goes back to sort of the lifelong cost benefit of the building. Having that connected to the daylighting system would operate those and block light and bring light in when you needed it, automated instead of manually, so just as an option. So that's the list. Again, I'll open it up for questions, but the intent being that we would like to have a direction fairly soon on which ones we develop and include for pricing that you would then be able to look at on bid day.
How is this list compiled? How was the priorities, where did you come up with these priorities?
These have been a long list of wish we'd have, wish we could afford. That's typically what alternates are. They've been identified by Estes as smart choices, things that we want to have included. If money was no object, all these things, we would recommend that all these things are in here. But as we put together our project, we realize there are certain things that are, maybe fall under more want than need, and this is the list that we've compiled that sort of fits outside of the basic function of this building. This building will function very well as a school without these items, but if you're able to include them, I think it would be a good, a good thing.
John, can you tell me on A2, this is about the non-glass partitions. What is spec there currently, do you know?
There are solid operable partitions, and so instead of not being glass and transparent, they are solid. So basically, there are solid doors that open and close, instead of windows that open and close.
Okay. And then can you show me A3, 1020 gymnasium bleacher seats? Where do those go? Where exactly is that?
Basically, in this document, it should be all of these bleachers seating on the upper level.
The upper level.
On both ends.
On both ends. Okay.
And as we continue to tweak the gym, that number goes back and forth, so it may not be quite 1,000, it may be closer to 800, but as we finalize the layout of the building, but it's the bleachers on the locker room.
And the glass that is spec on the school, the exterior glass, it's energy efficient glass, it's double paint, it's shaded, as I recall.
It will be all of those things. We're required by the energy code to meet certain requirements. Low-e coatings, it will be insulated, double paint, and so we have certain requirements that we have to meet. So this is basically about a high efficiency of windows that you can buy at this time is what's planned for within the building.
Okay. And so the exterior shades would enhance the energy efficiency as well as the appearance, like you had mentioned.
That's correct.
Is it possible to do those maybe only on the south-facing windows? Is this all of the exterior windows?
That's a very good point. We have identified all of them, but you are correct, it may not, may be worth thinking about on the south and the west, maybe more than the east and the north, and looking at it as a smaller number and breaking it up, because we can look at that alternate bid in terms of different areas and break it down. So I'll make a note of that, and we'll discuss that.
Okay.
Very good.
Some of the factors on the east, on the south and the west could make a change in the way the sun chimes through them when Phase Two is completed, too.
That's true. That's very true.
If you get another structure over there, it's going to shade them quicker.
That's very true.
And another thing I wanted to ask on this rosin floor over the sealed concrete is a $9,800 expense, but what is the projected maintenance cost savings by going the rosin floor over the sealed cement? Should be some savings there, I would think.
Over the life of that floor, you're going to have to reseal the floors. That's probably your maintenance that's going to happen. Concrete seal doesn't cost a tremendous amount of money, so it would take a while to come up with the $10,000. They would clean similarly, you'd use similar materials. So yes, you are correct, the ceiling's going to have to probably occur yearly. The resonant floor is going to be down for 20 years, easy.
I had one quick question, and the list of, in Estes's document, of the smart choice options, there was a line item for provide 240 openings of lockers on 12 mobile units, and I don't see that on your list. Is that, can you, is that a, what is that exactly?
We're going to get that included within the overall project, probably within FFNA.
That's what I wanted to hear.
There are, you know, the smart choices aren't necessarily alternate bids, and I'll explain this later. They're discussion points, and there are still items that we're forcing into the project.
Okay. Good answer.
Well, in that vein, too, one of the things that I see that's part of the project that I'm happy to see is the manual roller shades at the interior spaces, too. You know, that becomes key, you know, for security if that need be.
So since I'm of the mind that we need to move forward on this project sooner than later, would you like to give these gentlemen, these people, some direction and make a motion on this page so that we can tell them what to continue to work on?
Sure.
Scott, I would, I love your enthusiasm, and I want you to do that. My concern is, is that I don't know what the decision on the gyms will, how will that affect this? If it doesn't, great, but I want to make sure that the cost associated, because they're...
Well, these are alternate bids.
That's true. That is true.
So we could reject them when they come in.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right.
I need you to keep moving forward.
All right.
So that we can get bidding done.
I'm with you. Let's do it.
And start construction.
But we don't need to prioritize this list any more than what it is.
You do not need to prioritize it.
Nor do we need to pick out individual items.
That's correct.
Correct.
Basically, the idea would be...
So we're putting this as a package deal here, to look at, not trying to...
They'll do the work and do the bidding, and if the bids come in and we don't have the money or it's not donated, you don't do it.
But I just wanted to know that we're not asking, okay, so if, if the bids come in and we have $100,000, do we need to indicate which one of these?
At that point in time, we can, right?
Basically, you can select, the order of which these are listed is not prioritized, so you can select any one at any time. If the bids are $10,000 under, and you have $10,000, then you can accept the number eight, if you so chose. That's how it works.
If half a million is donated, we can start...
That's exactly right.
Prioritize them and picking based upon that as well. But they can't, they can't develop the specs if we don't tell them to move forward.
Yes. That's exactly right, sir.
And I'd like them to start developing specifications so that we can continue to move forward.
The biggest thing would be, is if there's something that's not on this list that we want.
True, exactly.
And that could come at a later point as well.
That's exactly right. Well, yes, we have to have time to put it together, but you're... That's exactly right, well, yes, we have to have time to put it together, but you're right.
Does anybody have anything else they have thought about or like to add? Administration? No? So is there a motion? I want to keep the meeting moving.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommended alternative bids.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the recommended alternate bids. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Nancy?
Yes.
Kaye Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Bye.
Yes.
Walk.
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. May we continue?
Great, thank you. The next thing to talk about is schedule, and my friends at Estes, our friends at Estes will come up here and talk about this a little bit as well. Here we are today, March 23rd, and we're at the Board of Education meeting, presenting where we are. For us to even have a chance to meet this construction schedule and have some early bid packages, the competition gym is important for us to know how to proceed. Estes will sort of indicate how much time, based on if a decision is made this day, then we'll need this much extra time or something like that, so there's not much to be learned here, other than try to reiterate the fact that decisions on the competitions are necessary for us to proceed. And that is really all of my presentation, I'm available for questions and...
Well, let's go back to the competition gym and see if we can come to consensus or make a decision tonight.
I think we need to hear S. report also, though, don't we, in regards to the costs? I think the costs are going to have a major...
That's correct.
I can tell you what I like, but whether or not I can afford it is a whole other...
All right. So we will, how can I do this under Robert's rules? Can I go back to an agenda item if I need to?
Back to, when did you refer?
Do I need to move to Agenda Item Five?
If I move to Agenda Item Five and we hear information, can I move back to Agenda Item Four and have a motion, or do I need to table, have a motion to table further action on Agenda Item Four first?
No, I don't, I think you can proceed to Five, and then go back. And then go back. We'll go back for another decision on Four.
Okay, just asking for clarification.
Let me just say, John, before we move on, great detail on the trash cans and the recycling and that detail that never even occurred to me at this point, but you've got it all covered.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll give kudos to Jean.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on.
Yes, sir. Thank you for inviting us back. I'm Pete Perez with Estes Construction, and here with me is Scott Scheller and Paul Newhart, also with Estes Construction. What we wanted to do tonight is, along with John and Jean's update on some of the architectural items, is give you an update on where we stand today in terms of the project budget. Keep in mind that some of the things that John talked about regarding alternate bids are things and items that you have seen in the smart choice list that we have generated over the last iterations of the refinement of the design. So with that in mind, I'd like to just ask you to pull out your booklets here. This is essentially what is in the board packet that was sent out last week. However, I would like to dial in on the executive summary page, just so that we can look at where we sit today and the variances, as you saw the last time, we like to indicate how we're gauging based on the last estimate that we did. So if you look at the executive summary page, the very first one, to the furthest right is the, what we're calling DD budget presented on today's date. To the right of that is the variance items, and you'll note that those numbers have fluctuated from the last time we met. One of those, just to hit on, is the civil engineering number. The reason for that is, at the last meeting, we were not sure that we would be able to obtain the engineered fill for a better cost per unit. We were still refining the quantities in terms of yardage. We were looking at options to simplify or make some of the utilities more efficient. That is the culmination, the number you see there, that is the culmination of all those efforts, and certainly working collaboratively with John, Jean, and the design team. The other thing you'll note is that the building itself, that number has increased, and there's no need for alarm there, because what that means is, and we'll look at Page Two, that we've been able to include some of those previous smart choice options into the base bid of the project. So when we get to Page Two, we'll touch on what those things are also. So if you go down the list, also, we were, at the last meeting, not certain we could get some building permit relief, as we call it. The number you see today suggests that we can, and that is with collaboration with the city of, with folks there. So all in all, you'll see that our overall project budget sits at 18.553, and the variance is to the right there. At this point, if you could go to Page Two, that is the listing of the major items that contributed to that variance, and you'll see both numbers that are to the plus and to the credit of the project. So those are primarily the listing of items that contributed. The top five or six are those smart choice options that we had talked about previously in terms of trying to get into the project. So while the project budget this month shows a slight increase from last month, it's an indication that the project is being refined, that the quantities are being refined, that the unit cost numbers, we're still soliciting on those, and it's just an essence of collaboration with the design team. So it's a very fluid process. It's not done, we're still going to continue to look at the estimates and look at the numbers, look at John and Jean's work, and make sure that we've identified the areas that have contributed both plus and minus to the project, so. And then on the following two pages are the smart choice options that we have indicated in the past, and as John alluded to, we don't look at smart choice options as alternate bids in the truest sense. What we want to do is give you the opportunity to make selections that will benefit your project, that will be within your budget, or that will be of benefit to the lifelong life of the project, therefore, the budget increases or decreases X amount of money. And that's the spirit of the smart choice options. From that, once we determine, okay, let's quit talking about smart choice option number seven, for example, and I don't know that that's a number, but then we can say, okay, we're not going to talk about that anymore because we want that as part of the project. Or, you know what, nice to have, maybe that should be an alternate bid item. Or let's just get rid of that altogether, we're going to change the way we view those things, so we're just not going to do that at this point. So that's the spirit of the smart choice options. And the, I failed to get my Google Drive in sync here, so I have to work off of the book here, but the very last page, five of five, essentially gives us an idea of the remaining costs to consider. You'll note that the very first bullet is the First Avenue Extension, and that, too, has an impact on the budget, the project, the schedule. We're going to track that separately so that we know how things are coming in, how they line up, and certainly what the cost for that scope of work is. But until we nail down exactly the extent of the First Avenue Extension, we've got a range of costs identified for that at this point. I think we're getting close with the design team, but at this point, we want to make sure that we don't lose sight of the cost impact or what that could be. The energy rebate, we have not been able to get an update from the energy consultant, however, all indications are that the $75,000 credit we're identifying could be more than what we're showing. In essence, right now, we want to make sure we're conservative there because there are still things that are being refined, so we don't want to overreach in that regard. And then, of course, the third bullet there is the competition gym. As John showed you the different options, one of the things we want to make sure we address is going to the larger competition gym, which moves the locker rooms to the south, and we reacted very quickly to this, has an order of magnitude between $785,000 and $825,000. Now, keep in mind, that is just a budget number that we're looking at right now. What we're also looking at is the schedule impact. We know that it's going to be an impact of one to two weeks on the design side, and certainly John and Jean could weigh in on that, but the bidding phase would have to be extended as well by one to two weeks, and then the construction phase could be impacted by approximately one to two months. So altogether, we're anticipating the impact of that being between two and three months of project schedule. So what that means is, when we were anticipating move-in at the beginning of the following school year, what we're saying now is that there's a very high possibility that the building would not be ready until the following semester, which would be spring of next, of the following school year. So those are just items that we want to make sure...
If we were to make that decision on them.
Correct. And we could refine those target dates and make sure that we update the schedule to reflect that, but we want to make sure we don't lose sight of the fact that it's not just a budget impact, there's also a schedule impact that goes along with that.
I would think that the one to two months extension in the time for the competition gym would not be as important to be moving into the school, because we've got a competition gym we can use while they're finishing that.
And certainly...
Really, as far as using the classroom space.
Correct. And certainly, that goes into the phasing of the project, or what do we need to tackle right away. For example, you heard the discussion on John's outlined schedule there, early bid packages. If we can stay on track with what we've identified as the main functions of the building, the learning environments, the commons, and potentially pieces of that gymnasium that are not impacted by this change, if there are any, then we can say that this is going to be the priority as we move forward with construction, to try and meet that.
And you talk about a subperiod of time being later letting the bids for that, because it's going to take you guys some more time to get it designed, but I would think if whoever got the school bid and knew for sure that we're going to do it, just got to get your guys, everything put together for them to bid it, that if they're already here, they're going to give us a pretty decent bid on that, too, I would think. So I wouldn't think that that bid would have to be maybe let in at the same time, as long as we knew we were going to do the project anyway.
Yes, and I just...
And even if it is a month behind getting bid, don't mean, and a month, two months behind getting finished, doesn't affect the use of the classroom space.
Correct.
At the scheduled timing, I wouldn't think, it's too much.
Right. And our goal would be to bid the remainder of the project, which is the entire project, all at once after the civil and site work bid package. So we're not saying that the addition of, or increasing the size of the gym is a later bid package and it's an alternate, we're saying it's in or it's not in so that we can bid the entire thing, to get economy of scale on the dollars, yes, sir.
Okay. But in the meantime, everyone is moving forward with completion of bid specs and design work on the learning areas and the commons, right?
That's correct.
That's all on schedule?
Mm-hmm.
It's just this gym that is holding us up at the moment, or potentially?
It is potentially holding us up, and I just want to sort of bring to your attention what's toward the bottom on the first page, is the early bid package that's going out, and we talked about it being civil work, site utilities grading, talked about it being structure, and that's where it becomes really difficult for us to sort of make sure that we get all of the structure. We want to bid all the steel at the same time, as Pete had said, there's an economy of scale of that, so trying to package this all together while we can phase it so that, okay, we want the learning commons area, we want that stuff done first, the gym is a lower priority, we want to make sure that we get the steel in time, because that's critical and paramount to the completion of this building. As Estes will tell you, getting the steel in gets us the ability to enclose the building, which gets them to work over the winter. This building doesn't get enclosed, we don't get the steel in time, it comes closer to September, the building can't get enclosed, and now you're either spending lots of money to enclose the building so that construction can continue, or you're delaying the opening of the building. So it's really that early bid package of steel that has, you know, we're doing everything we can right now with what we've got to get done by this early April. So changes, I guess, if you were to say today, that would change my opinion on how much it affects the schedule, but if it takes a week or two weeks, you know, that will have an impact on our ability to meet this early bid package for the steel, which is critical to getting this building done when we said it could get done.
Well, while we have all been conscious about moving forward and keeping the progress moving along, we only have one chance to do this right, and we've got to do it right. And, you know, I'm not saying one way or the other about the gym at this point, but, you know, in the lifetime of this school, what's two months, three months, or, you know. We miss the school start date.
I would...
It's not a good situation, but...
I would hope by before the evening's over with, we make a decision on the gym, Lorraine.
We will, yes, we will, Scott.
So your comment was at this moment?
Yeah, so at this moment, you know, I just wanted to reflect on that.
So in a few moments, maybe we can make a decision?
Oh, yes.
Okay. You know, I want to move forward on this project.
Me, too.
Okay. What else you got?
Well, in the booklet, you'll also see Tab Three, which is our, just our summary schedule, which mirrors what you see up there on the screen from VLDV. And there, we just want to make sure that we identify the complete early bid package, as John was mentioning, in terms of site, civil utilities, foundations, and steel. So the winterization of the project is the key here, make sure we've got steel on time so we can enclose and forego some of those winterizing costs that we had not anticipated, so, getting later into the year, so. But as a project progresses, this schedule will evolve, there's quite a bit more data that goes along with this, but for now, we just want to make sure we don't lose sight of those milestone dates, as we call them, which mirror what John is showing.
So do you have any decisions that we need to make as far as you're concerned this evening, other than moving forward on something with the gym potentially?
Well, I think that is primarily one of the directions that we would like to get either tonight or shortly after tonight, and the other part of that is the smart choice options that are also listed in Tab Number One, just to make sure that we're not continuing to show something that may not be a priority to you moving forward, so.
I just have one smart choice question. On the wood roof decking in the commons in lieu of acoustical metal deck, would we still need the acoustical tiles in that commons area if we went the wood? Would we still need those?
Two different things. One's in the gym is where we're talking about the tiles, right? That's the additional tech them in the gym. The idea of the wood, you know, is one of the things that we're fighting really hard to get in the project, so that is why it's not, wasn't as a recommendation as an alternate bid, is that we'd like to design it.
That was my question.
Yep, it's in there.
That's fine, if it's not there.
That's what we're trying to do.
Scott, come on.
Do you have any recommendations, Dr. Cox, from administration on the smart choice options? Have you and the administrative team reviewed any of this, or have any suggestions?
No, we always meet the day after the board meetings.
And from our perspective, what we brought to you was the alternate bids are the ones that we would say is what you should be proceeding with.
I like your list.
I agree.
As we voted on.
Okay, so we're not going to do anything with this. So what else was there? I'm sorry.
No, that's, as I say, we just, again, we just want to make sure that you understand what all is, that we've been looking at for cost, the schedule, the cost impacts, as we outlined them here in the booklet, so.
It really does come down to the competition gym.
Gym.
You know, that cost will then get incorporated into the budget, or however you see fit.
So are there any other questions or comments for Estes Construction on the budget presentation? No? So I'm going to move back to Agenda Item Four, and let's have the conversation and potentially a decision on the gym.
Can we pull the gym slides back up?
Absolutely. Which one is, you want to see one, you want to go through them again, or?
Yeah.
Really, the, I don't want to sort of say, okay, if you select one of these, this is the locker room layout. We would continue to work with the athletic department to get the locker rooms, the locker count exactly the way you want. It really is coming down to this sized gym, where you've got bleachers that, you know, retract all the way to the walls, or you're talking about the, where we currently are with a little bit wider gym, bleachers still on top of the locker rooms, locker rooms are still within the footprint of that gymnasium, but we've increased the dimensions in the north-south direction to give ourselves a little bit more room for play.
Yeah, and on this option, as John mentioned earlier, we did some quick numbers, and we're looking at... and we're looking at about a $300,000 increase by making this wider.
My opinion, I guess, if you go to the top, the first one, what I'll share is that I think for an $800,000 increase in the top one, in reality, when you're going cross courts, we, we had, we see no significant advantage to extra seating, and for the same, similar amount of seating, we can look at a different orientation of the courts, and how much seating is, where the seating is pulled out on, yes, that option, for substantially less cost. I think that the, in my opinion, the locker rooms were sufficient in this layout, you know, the staff had taped that out on the floor at the high school, they, their opinion seemed to be that they would be sufficient. What I had anticipated was that if we were going to spend an extra $800,000, that we would get significant amounts of seating to come with that when we're going cross courts to be able to host large team-type events. I support this option with the seats, a different orientation, the lower cost, still around 300 seats.
Anyone else?
The quick figuring that I had done was with a total of five rows of bleachers pulled out, you would end up with about six and a half feet on one end and a little over six feet on the other end. I walked off our current gym here at this building, and we're a little over five feet on the end lines, so it would be an increase over what we currently have here, just as a perspective.
But haven't we decided that that's not enough? Five feet isn't enough?
Here, no, that would allow for an extra foot and a half.
So it'd be six.
Yes, during competition, during practice, the, all of the bleachers could be rolled up and would have three rows times 26 inches of increased space.
I concur with Jason, I, I don't see how we can spend 800,000 to move the lockers to the south, even though I like that layout probably better.
Mm-huh.
I don't know how we would justify doing that.
Yeah.
The, the layout of the cross gyms going the same direction as the main gym, it makes sense more for tournament-type situations, but at such a large cost for the few times in comparison to how many times it'll just be used as a practice gym, I don't see how we can justify 300, 400, $1,000 in additional spending for the few times each year. It would be very nice.
It would be very nice.
In a grand world where we had no budgets to, yes.
Our wants and needs at battle again, you know? You know, we, we talked about, early on, we were just going to build a gym, you know, then it became this competition gym, now it's, you know, this five-star competition gym, and it would be wonderful to have it just like it is, but I really can't support the additional cost. If we really think that that's what we should be building, you know, then should that competition gym be in phase two? Well, we really don't want to upset the apple cart that much, do we? You know?
You know, that's true.
I really don't want to go back and revisit that.
No, no.
But that's, that's true, that's true, if we think we need that much, then, and that's not where we've decided as a board, we want, we want this now, so we need to build it to satisfy as many of those wants we have with the amount of money we have. And I think you, we answer the wants by going, keeping the gyms, locker rooms underneath the bleachers, just widening it, giving us that safety fact, giving us that extra square footage, the curtains, the teams to sit on either end, and when there is a tournament, we'll just have to figure out how to move lines around and shift the bleachers.
This allows teams to be able to sit on the sidelines, like, like we traditionally would, the seven feet.
You know, unless we thought that some private fundraising was going to come in, but, you know, that's.
We're still going to need that now, even to put our bleachers in here.
We're going to need that anyway.
And for lockers, and that's.
The question is how much additional private fundraising.
Exactly, I know. It's risk, it, there's a lot of risk with all of that.
I, I'm comfortable with the scenario that I described, and, you know, you mentioned risk, but in our next agenda item, using the, the money that we had dedicated to the sports complex that fell through as a backup, you know, essentially, in my opinion, if bids come in and we are, see a great benefit to lower bids, then maybe we don't have to tap the extra money that is there, if extra fundraising comes in, we're there, but worst-case scenario, we have that extra athletic complex money that we'll look in the next agenda item to reallocate.
But that's still not enough to cover.
No, that covers our.
Our current.
Base budget, so staying here, am I hearing a consensus? Go back to 15-4, would you please? Am I hearing that this is what people are liking, to keep the locker rooms underneath the bleachers?
Upper bleachers.
Yes.
So is there a motion to proceed withdrawing 15-4, so that everybody knows where we're at?
Sure, I'll make a motion.
Yes, sir.
So that everybody's on the same page? You have it numbered, so.
Yeah.
I move to approve slide 15-4 as the plan for our new competition gym for the middle school.
Now second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Plan A015-4 for the gym for the new middle school, is there any further discussion?
John, is that the same as 15-3, but 15-3 just shows the.
The competition gym, yes, layout, the main court layout, yes. And there's still work for us to be doing on terms of how that, the bleachers actually work with that, and, so that makes sense in terms of your spacing, but right now, that's what we're showing.
There's a, there's a door right here.
That's correct.
And our main door is right here.
No, I thought we got rid of those doors.
To the.
The main doors into the commons are right here.
For phase two, right? You're coming in on the, from this, where the circle parts of the building are over here.
People are going to enter the gym.
That's true, yeah, for the athletic portion, you're, you are correct.
Right, here, and you've got this exit door right here.
That's correct.
And from the outside, it looks awkward.
Okay.
To me.
I'll take a look at that.
That be, move, I mean, this door appears to have gone away, there was one there before, wasn't there?
That is correct. I'll have to double-check on if they're actually both there, I think what we're showing, to get the numbers correct, was actually extending, can only burn over the opening, so you'd actually walk under them, like you would, so I'll, I'll double-check with Gene in terms of how that works out.
Okay.
Yes, I will do that.
But those would be emergency exit doors only.
That's correct, that's the intent.
Not able to open them from the outside.
As you walk up to the building, you still see an exit door, and then you see the main doors, and it just, I know they've.
The rhythm, yeah.
They've put an extra wall to try to provide a little bit of screening and hiding that, but it still is right there, and it just, it looks awkward to me.
Okay, yeah, we'll take a look at that.
I agree, Dr. Cox, there's a way if we can get by with not having that, since we have exit doors on the opposite side.
I'll do that.
To keep the, look at the front, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll do that, definitely.
Follow whatever prior codes you need to.
Absolutely, that will still be, yes.
But if we can.
Where's electrical?
Not do that, that would be great.
Where's electrical room in the laundry room going now?
They would stay where they are, they're not shown here, but they're still in this area, yeah, as a part of the original plan, it's all sliding to the south.
Kind of your extra, not a, I don't want to use farm technology, terminology, but it's an extra actual add-on to the building there, like.
That's correct, yeah, yeah, that's, that's basically, it's a one-story addition to this side.
Bump out, yeah.
One-story addition.
One-story addition. Any other comments or questions? We haven't had roll call yet, have we? Any comments or questions from the public on this item? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
May Cumber?
Yes.
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 Motion carried five to zero, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You all have more work to do.
So this means we are on track with our schedule by making this decision.
Let us reconvene with Estes, we'll do it tomorrow, and we'll make sure that that is the case, yes.
That's right.
Much more closely than if we'd gone the other route.
Validate that.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So agenda item six, facility, budget, and funding, is this you, Dr. Cox, or Terry?
Yeah.
Either one?
At the last, last week, the board voted to rescind the offer on the athletic complex. If the board was favorable to it, you could use the 275,000 toward the building project and some of the things we've talked about tonight, and so the recommendation would be that that money be put toward the construction budget.
Any comments by board members?
I support that, you know, I had, you had, like I said, kind of a, an emergency backup with donations or bidding consent very favorably, maybe it's not needed at the very end, where we look to make that final cash payment.
I think I saw a list of alternative bids, though.
Sure.
They're going to come in high.
That's, that's, I guess my comments on that is that if we were to be able to avoid using it, great, if not, this gives us a little bit of peace of mind that with what we approved with the gym, we, our base bid, including the gym expansion, can be covered with existing funds.
Yeah, I agree with that, too, you know, rather than continue to hold that money in a separate little account, you know, for that rainy day fund for this athletic complex, should it ever come to fruition, you know, I support putting it towards the building, you know, where the majority, all of these students can benefit from the expenditure.
We've done a lot of investigating onto what our options are as far as ball fields and athletic, what the thing we've really learned, I think, through all of that, is our 275,000 is not going to get us what we want. What I see that 275,000 doing in this building is this list of, of variances that they just showed us today with the addition of some kitchen equipment, the masonry walls, the floor finishes, the stair treads, the, those are things that we can get a lot with, that 275,000.
And had our intended purchase gone as planned, you know, that would have been ideal, it did not happen, and now we're left to reassess where we're at, and I think this is appropriate.
You have anything, Jim?
Well, I'm, I, I agree with you that we should put the 275,000 towards the building, but I don't think we should abandon the fact that we should look for fundraising from donations, because whether we spend it on this athletic complex, which is gymnasium, or we have to spend it three years from now for the sportsman park ball fields, we should maybe start raising it, see if we get it, see if we get anything, so we know what we got to spend for the ball field in that time come, if we got this paid for then, that's fine.
I agree.
But I don't think we should abandon the idea, because it's going to take two or three years to get it.
Yes.
I think we should keep working on that project of getting public donations.
Well, we have those numbers in, in place, it's true, we could pick one of those alternative designs, alternative pieces of property.
Locations, yeah.
And set that as a goal, and let there be, let that become.
Well, this is near.
For the fundraising.
For the fundraising.
This property here hasn't, nobody's beat the door down to buy it before we submit it, so maybe it'll still be there in three years or four, we don't know. If it is, it is, if it isn't, it isn't, we've got other alternatives.
I guess I had a couple of things in mind. I hate to see us potentially give up on a new baseball softball complex at the present time, I'm still trying to accept that fact, even though we voted that seven days ago. If we divert this money and the city property that we currently use for baseball softball floods, it is what it is, and I'd rather not hear any complaints, because we attempted to move forward and solve other problems. If we continue to have problems, then the public needs to step forward to help us solve those problems, and that means cash and/or moving. On the other hand, we also have a project of a bus barn that we have money set aside, and we will be working on phase one sooner than later, I hope, and getting completed, and that phase two was around the 275 to 300,000 mark. So it's all a matter of establishing priorities, and I just struggle and have, you know, for the last week to 10 days with giving up on baseball softball something, but the money's not there, the drive and support seems to have dwindled from fundraising and talk of it. Of course, haven't had any flooding since last June either, July, so it'll probably start up again when we start flooding, but we do need to make priorities and, and move on. I just wanted to point out, those are two things that I still struggle with and are also priorities for me. Unfortunately, they are moving downwards on the list of priorities, because we need to move forward with this project. And it's all about setting priorities and finding a way to accept and live with those priorities, and I will, I just wanted to share my thoughts. So do we have a motion?
I move to release the athletic complex funding and add it to the construction budget as recommended by the administration.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to release the money that had been set aside for an athletic complex land purchase and allocate it towards the new middle school budget. Any further discussion? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote.
Wintering?
Yes.
Diott?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Crispy?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Agenda item seven, vocal music presentation, Mr. Beal.
So happy, Stacey.
Welcome to the meeting.
Yes.
All right, so, my name is Bradley Beal, and I am the high school choral director at Charles City High School. I would first like to thank the board and administrators and everyone for allowing me to attend this convention and to learn more about my craft, especially as such a young teacher. So what is it? So about three weeks ago, I attended the National American Choral Directors Association Convention in Salt Lake City, Utah, and it's a meeting of some of the best choral minds, not only in the United States, but in the world, composers, directors, teachers from all over, and they all come together. Every other year, it switches between a national convention and a regional convention, so this year was the national convention, which I have not attended before, so that was a great experience for me. So what makes something like this worthwhile? Well, same as any other professional convention, a lot of the big things kind of still apply. One of the big things is. One of the big things is networking. Like I said, a lot of the biggest names in choral music, the rock stars of my world, were there and I was able to meet a lot of them and kind of bounce some ideas off of them, as well as a lot of, a lot of young teachers and a lot of people that have been in this profession for a really long time and kind of get to learn what they've done and make connections, not only in the Midwest area, not only in Iowa, but also across, across the country. Something about the musical arts, especially the choral arts, is you learn and you grow and you become a better teacher and performer and conductor by hearing other people's work. And so every single day, there are multiple concerts of some world-class performing groups that I was able to attend and I'll talk a little bit about some of those and kind of the ones that hit me the most and that I was able to glean the most from. Also, of course, there are some world-class presentations and workshops by a lot of those people. That's going to be the main bulk of what I'm going to talk about, kind of some of those things and how I'm planning on implementing them at Charles City High School. And then, of course, to reinvigorate and inspire, to kind of see the people that are doing it at the top of the game and kind of be surrounded by people that share that, that same kind of passion that you do. So I'll start with some of the concerts. These are just some of the groups that I was able to, I was able to see and, and, and learn from. I'll just kind of do a quick run-through with some of the University of Southern California Chamber Singers, fantastic ensemble, the King Singers, kind of an early music ensemble, St. Mary's International School, based out of Japan, the Iowa State Singers from right here in Iowa, they were fantastic, the Salt Lake Vocal Artists, a lot of, got to hear a lot of the groups in Salt Lake City, including Mormon Tabernacle Choir, and the University of Michigan Men's Glee Club. So I'll start to talk a little bit about some of the workshops. One of them was entitled Music Five and it was, it's from a middle school teacher in Minnesota. And he found that in his day-to-day teaching, he was not having as much interaction with some small groups and with individual students as he would like. He didn't feel like he knew his students that well because he was working with a group of middle school boys of sixty kids and was not getting as much attention with them as he wanted. So he came up with this schedule called Music Five. So it's a four-day schedule where on Day One, they introduce this, introduce a central musical concept, then Days Two and Three, they do Music Five, I'll talk about what that is, and then on the last day, last day, they review and create the central concept that they did on Day One. So what is Music Five? Basically, what he does is he divides this, divides the class into two groups and they'll do one of the five activities up here. Okay? So they'll either do ensemble music, which is kind of your traditional large group, working with, working on the music that you're doing in the choir. Chamber music, where they're working in some smaller groups, so that's kind of something like you might just take the tenors and do some sectional work, something like that. Some music listening, where he'll find some vocal models and have the students listen to that and maybe write, write down some of their observations there. Music journaling, where he will either prompt them with questions or they'll just write about something that they've been working on in class. And then Slam, which stands for Smart Like a Musician. That's where they'll do a lot of their work on theory, music history, some of those kinds of things. Something that's great about this and that I would like to bring to Charles City is it's great in, especially around this time, we're working on solo ensemble kind of things, where I'll have a lot of, I mean, I have 27 students that are working on solos or duets or those kinds of things, but I have 64 students in choir. So what are those other 64 students doing? Well, it would be great if I could have them do something like this, where I can take those kids that are doing some of those solos and duets and while they're doing that and while I'm working with them or they're working with accompanists or what have you, the other kids can be doing some of these kinds of things. I really like the idea of introducing a central concept, something that's finite, because as choral educators, we often will, you know, we know what we're working on with our music, but whether or not that translates to the kids, that's, that's kind of hit or miss. So making sure that every week you have, okay, we're working on this thing and then that review and, review and create day is for, okay, that thing that we talked about on Monday, now we're going to put it in the piece of music that we're performing. So this is something that was really, was really great for me and something that I'm looking to implement very soon. I'll try not to bore you with a lot of this choral stuff. Another one of the, the great things, great workshops I attended was called Building a Beautiful Sound with Tenors. Tenors are the, the rarest vocal part to find. It's hard to find, especially true tenors. And so, and when you do find them, it's very easy to kind of mess them up. So he just kind of talked about some of the different vocal registers of tenors and kind of helping them work through that and talked about some exercises to help them kind of ease, especially with some of those younger voices as they're going through the voice break and those kinds of things, kind of ease that transition into the voice that they're going to have for the rest of their lives and kind of using it in a choral context. Next, this was definitely my nerdy moment of the, of the whole thing. This was entitled Building Sound and Spirit and she talked a lot about developing resonance and timbre. So resonance and timbre, that's kind of how we create volume and that's how we, everyone's voice sounds a little different, that's that timbre that we're talking about. It has to do a lot with, it's going to get all sciency, but the different formants and kind of different vowels and the shape of the sound bouncing, bouncing in your head. And so especially with young singers, a lot of, something that we run into is they have little itty-bitty sound and they don't want to open their mouth and it's hard to get them to open up and to create more sound. And so she worked with a bunch of exercises to get them to kind of open up that sound, to kind of create a little bit more sound, and that just builds their confidence as solo singers and definitely in the ensemble as well. So that was, that was great to see. Another thing was I attended a session called Achieving Stylistic Nuance in Gospel Music. Gospel and spiritual music is something that's kind of become a staple of, of Western choral music and something that we run into a lot is making it stylistically accurate while still giving a, a performance and staying true to the ensemble that you are. So just some of the things that he talked about were a lot of young singers will try and scoop to kind of get that kind of a sound and you never want to tell high school singers to scoop because they will run with that. So he called that vocally emoting and it's kind of putting a different kind of, a different kind of feel on it. He talked a lot about rhythmic and percussive singing, staying rhythmic, staying. Just today, I was talking to the kids about, in jazz, there's this concept called in the pocket, where you kind of fit into that groove and it's not tense, but you're all rhythmically together. And there's, there's a similar kind of thing in gospel music. And then he just talked about some of the, some of the phrasing of gospel music and some of the gospel vernacular that you can bring out, bring back and to, to sing gospel music in a stylistic way. Finally, another, another workshop that was, was great for me was called Building Community in the Choral Ensemble, especially as a first-year teacher, as I'm trying to build up this program, this is something that's really important to me. She talked about, at their school, they have this concept called Tribes and it's a school-wide concept, kind of a PBS kind, PBIS kind of thing, where every student has a, has a group of students that they kind of, that's kind of their home base. And the four agreements of Tribes are that there's going to be attentive listening, appreciate others, no put-downs, mutual respect, and students have the right to pass if they feel like they don't have something to contribute or they don't want to contribute, they can just pass it along. So what do these Tribes do? Well, they help the students work, work by themselves to set goals and solve problems, to monitor and assess progress, again, by themselves, and to celebrate achievements. Okay? A lot of choirs will do something like this. I know when I was at Luther College, we had what we called Choir Families, where you would have some returning members and some new members and they would all get together and it was kind of just a group that you could, you could come home to, where if we ever needed to break off into groups, we could go to our family and just kind of talk about what we were doing in choir that day. And that's something that is, it just seems so duh, but definitely something that, that I want to bring back to Charles City and just kind of give, give kids that kind of home base where they can go to and, you know, not just go to their little group of friends and, and stick with them whenever we're going and talking about different concepts. So again, I just want to thank you all for, for letting me kind of be, you know, go out and, and learn this, especially as a first-year teacher. Again, these are the times where I'm going to glean the most from these kinds of things and I've been to a lot of these kinds of conventions, but it's totally different when you have a choir to come home to, a group of students where you can say, I know exactly how that would fit in my group. So again, thank you very much for, for letting me kind of share some of those things with you and listening to me tonight. Do you have any questions, obviously?
I just had one, couple comments. Great job on Footloose. I know you were integral in putting that together with the drama team. That was a great, great play, great, great musical. And then the other thing is, you know, I think we all noticed around Christmas time how you took the, the students out caroling and invited the community to join them. And I think that was great, you know, giving these kids that community and taking it outside the school, I think, is a very good thing. You've given them a lot of memories too. So, good job.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, in your short amount of time here, I've heard nothing but positive comments throughout the community and I think that's awesome. Your energy is obviously very impactful and so far.
Absolutely.
Thank you for making a difference.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Move on to Agenda Item Eight, the PBL Presentation. Looks like Mr. Gable drew the short straw.
The short straw.
He drew the short straw for this evening. Oh, no.
All right, thanks for having us. I'll talk to you a little bit, we're going to talk to you about project-based learning at, really the work we've been doing in the middle school and high school together here over the last several weeks, planning that's dated back into the summer and a lot of implementation that's been occurring here recently. But we're going to zip right through it. We're going to share this document with you at, so you can use it at your own leisure. So some of this information is there for you because this is something that, if you haven't heard about a lot, PBL or Project-Based Learning, if you're following Dr. Cox or I on Twitter, you've probably seen it quite a bit. I'm trying to keep up with him lately, since he's returned from the East Coast, he's just been all over stuff, so. But we're going to, we're going to go through some information here, something that I've shared with a lot of different groups that we've talked to and all of our staff members is this information here about the Fortune 500 Most Desired Skills and how that's changed over the course from 1970. So if you take a look at those particular skills, and we did a little exercise with people to kind of guess how those might have changed, then you can see how those have changed dramatically over the last 30 to 40 years in terms of what employers are looking for out of, out of students coming out of high school and college. Again, and I like to point out too, not to say that writing, math and, and reading aren't essential concepts we still want to teach our students, but you can see the importance of desired skills from the, the biggest 500 companies in the United States. It's a pretty interesting way to look at it. And it also leads into what Mr. Gable and I are going to talk about a little bit more here tonight. So obviously, times are changing and education exists a large, is a larger context of society, so we have to keep up. Everything's changing around us, it's no secret to anybody, so we've really kind of garnered that around one central question and that's what needs to change in education at Charles City to meet the needs of our learners. And we've done quite a bit of work around that question, so you'll kind of see that intertwined throughout what we talk about today. This is a little bit of an outdated shot of what's called an affinity diagram. Reached out to a number of students, all K-12, teaching, staff has been asked this question, several community groups. If you remember, we did the Back to School Project back in December, we're going to do that again on April 17th. So those participants have been asked the question. You're going to do this a little bit later for us today and, and get this information back to us because basically what we're looking, we're going to ask you to do that, excuse me. What we're looking for is just feedback from everybody about the top three things that they feel that needs to change in education. And we've compiled those in light categories into what, what this affinity diagram, this is the, the first shot I took. It's about probably four times that size right now. We went old-school with it and just put Post-it notes on a big piece of paper because a little bit more of the dramatic effect to it. So here's what we've come up to. Most current data, looking at light categories, when those things were broken down from all the responses that we received, and you can see, and hopefully you're going to see these things kind of brought up and how we explain why project-based learning is becoming an important concept here at Charles City. People, and these are light categories based on all that data, authentic, real-world, learning experiences, individualized learning, 21st century, interdisciplinary, so combining subjects in, in high school and, and middle school classes to create different learning experiences and the list kind of goes on. So as you look at that list, see the connections between project-based learning and the feedback that we've received on, on what needs to change. Is this my last one? Okay, so a little bit of the objectives for project-based learning that we've undertaken with our staff. These are kind of the initial, the work that we're doing with staff this year, defining what PBL is, explaining why it's a vital concept, and then just getting started with the process. So the staff is working through designing projects right now, some of them have implemented them already, and we'll kind of wrap up with that here in a little bit.
So the question is, why is project-based learning a vital concept? And if you look at this slide, where'd the rest of it go? Okay, got to add some more there. This is why project-based learning is essential. No matter how you slice it or dice it, this is what research has showed, these are the important characteristics. This would apply back to like Slide Three that came up, red and blue and black, and then showed you the opposite on the other side. This is what employers want, this is what colleges want. They want students that can think critically, they want students that can collaborate and be creative, they want students that can understand financial literacy and so on. This is why project-based learning is essential because it employs, it utilizes all of these things which are desired in our 21st century society. Looking at the definition, according to the Buck Institute of Education, it's, PBL is systematic, it's engaging, it's covering the essentials, knowledge and life-enhancing skills, it's inquiry, it's an inquiry process, it's authentic, students should be able to draw connections between what they're learning and their lives. And that's a big part of project-based learning. Down at the bottom, it does say, PBL is research-based, it's effective, effective instructional strategy. And the criteria off on the right side, those are all the main points, 21st century skills, need to know voice and choice, that's what I was just emphasizing a minute ago. If students have choice in what they're learning and have some voice and some say in it, there should be a stronger connection to what they're learning and that's what makes it exciting. So if you can compare PBL, looking at all the adjectives along the left-hand column and if you apply it to a 21st century definition, you can see that they're all applicable. Students working in teams to experience and explore relevant, real-world problems, questions, issues and challenges, then create presentations and products to share what they've learned. Maybe I skipped previously the, the presentations part, but most, almost all these projects at the end or somewhere, it doesn't have to be at the end, but somewhere during the process, there's going to be an audience where they have to do the presentation themselves. They have to communicate with each other as students, they have to communicate as a team, and then they also have to communicate it to some sort of audience. It could be as simple as the, the presentation is just to the teacher. It could be to their classmates, it could be the student body, or it could be people coming in from outside, public, school board members, businessmen, whoever they have to work, work on, whoever they can present it to. Project-based learning, I think just the main thing I want to touch here, it's, it's not the main course. That's a long list of, of what it is. What it isn't, it's not just the main course and it isn't dessert. There were, when I was in the classroom, there were many, some things that I did, a couple of things in particular I always remember, definitely were on the lines of project-based learning, but I was much more project-oriented, do all the teaching and then say, here, go do the project. If this needs to be part of the process. Part of the process needs to be developing the systems, learning, you know, the, the material as they complete the project at the same time. And again, it's not just something you do at the end of the, of the, of the unit, it can be done the entire time. Teachers, you know, we, we have a lot of conversations with them about what their next ideas are and what we can help with and they say, well, we want, maybe we'll get a speaker at the end. Well, why at the end? Why not in the middle? Then that allows your students to build more as they go on and continue through the project. So again, it's project-based learning, it's not project-oriented.
Just to go back there, when you get this, this presentation shared with you, the two links on what it is and what it isn't are about four to five-minute videos on different things, there are real quick explanation of what they are and what they are not, but that's an, if that's an easier way for you to process the information, definitely check those out. So where does it fit in at Charles City right now? You can see, hopefully, the connection, I know we're moving pretty fast for the sake of time tonight, but between 21st century skills and project-based learning that Mr. Gable just went over, you can see the, the connection between the feedback we've received on our, on our kind of guiding question with the process about what needs to change and some of the aspects of project-based learning and how those connections are being made. So that's been, it's allowed us to respond to the feedback that we've received. We have hundreds of responses, probably close to, hopefully by the time we're done, thousands of responses on what people want to see changed at Charles City, and you can see the connections between the two. We have spent a lot of time researching, working with teachers, looking into what project-based learning is, sent people on school visits back in the fall, and all those things come back to project-based learning being a vital instructional strategy for 21st century learners. It's allowed us to develop assessment and instruction. That's probably the one thing that we want to concentrate on next and spend a little bit more time on is assessment and actually instructing within a project-based learning experience. You know a lot of the work we've done with professional learning communities, if you, if we were to pull up the four critical questions of PLCs, what do we want students to do, what, how do we know that they've done it, so on and so forth, we can see those two connections. Focus on 21st century skills, so on and so forth. So it allows us to really take a critical look at instruction and different things in our district. The process that we've used, and this would be the next time that we talk to you, we're going to talk to you more about how we've actually, what we've actually done with PBL. We're going to give you a very quick run-through now, but this is a design process that we've used. It's kind of a culmination of three different design processes that are out there with project-based learning, and we've kind of made it our own based on staff feedback and what they're really feeling about project-based learning. So those five steps are what we've really been spending a lot of time on, and to really narrow it down, one and two of what we've really spent a lot of time on leading up to this point. We're getting into the talks on assessment and grading and reporting as we go throughout that process, but these are all, like anything else, it's a step-by-step, phase-in process, and that's where we've been able to get in the calendar year, and we feel pretty good about that. So some of our efforts, again, you'll have this, to highlight some of them. On January 19th, we spent the day with Clear Lake who has kind of customized their schedule to fit in a project-based learning block at the end of the day. We're looking at different scheduling options of what's going to best fit for us at Charles City. A little bit more specifically in the middle school at this point, but knowing that every year that we get this type of learning into those middle school students, that the high school is going to have to respond. Construction of project-based learning class offerings next year in the high school, we have three different interdisciplinary classes that we're going to teach at the high school next year. A culinary science with Mrs. Lumberg and Mrs. Forsyth. Kind of a math and construction-type class that Jim Lumberg and David Volusser are putting together. And then we're going to block US History Two and English Two for sophomores and a humanities course. So we're really excited about that because they're all going to be project-based and kind of moving us to help phase in that kind of work for years to come. Then we're meeting individually a lot, with Mr. Gable and I and other members of our team, Mr. Johanning Meyer and Mr. Wolf are having individual meetings, and we're, we have an August day PBL workshop in the works, just about finalized. So, to end today, looking at our affinity diagram, we're going to ask, if you would, respond, and I think Mr. Walker may be the only one that's done this, but you get three more, so.
Oh.
You've got to think of three different ones, I guess.
Three different, I don't remember what I said.
There you go. It's okay, we'll take repeats. But just take a look, top three things that in your mind need to change at Charles City to meet the needs of our learners. And get those back to Dr. Cox sometime soon, and we'll cut those up and we'll put those right on the affinity diagram, and we're going to keep building this data in terms of where we're going to go. Resources document, when you get this shared with you, I'll have Mr. DeVore, I think, share this with all of you. PBL resources, click on there, you're going to see what all of our teachers are looking at. If I can pull it, if it comes up quickly, I'll show you what that looks like, but it's a substantial document. All these resources, different presentations we have, really anything you want to know about PBL can be found on this document, and we're hoping teachers are using that quite a bit to learn more about the process. So, any questions?
Just two quick comments. Fifteen years ago, when I made the transition from high school to college, this was probably one of the biggest eye-openers for me. My high school was very project-oriented, like you said, much of my college was very project-based, and that transition was difficult at times, you know, to urge you to go through the process of being successful in the project-based stuff. So I think I'm really excited about this, I think that's a great opportunity. The other thing that I would look to in the future is to further develop maybe some relationships with our industries in the community to help apply this to our real-world stuff in this community would be another fantastic.
Yeah, Back to School Project is what we're really hoping to get out of that, and we've gotten some really good responses from that so far. Absolutely, that's a very good point.
For our middle school students to be able to make presentations to audience members like that is, would be, that's very essential. There are going to be questions out there, I'm told that there's been more questions, teachers have said, most people are asking about it from the community, so if you get questions, remember you've got that document that's been put together, and go back and you can look through some things there and maybe answer some questions or just simply Google it, and you're going to find some answers to those things, too, because it's good stuff, and it's fun working with Josh, he talks to this stuff in his sleep, it's pretty cool.
It feels like that.
That's great.
April 17th, we have Back to School Projects. It's a Friday, if any of you are available, we'd love to have one. At least one of you attend that day, we're going to do it a couple of times again next year. I've gotten some, we had a really good list, finalized a couple today, some really big business and community members that are going to come, it's going to be a great day, so that's going to help these conversations go. So if you're interested, give me a shout and we'll see what we can do. And then just put a plug in, Smart Lunch Trials will come, March 31st is when we're going to start that, so some really cool things going on, so, thanks for your time.
What day did you say you were doing your?
Friday, April 17th.
I think I'm available.
He left some late five.
No, I'm just going to sleep on the 16th.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I think we'll take a short recess, people can stretch their legs, and then we'll go for the second half of the meeting. Time is 8:13, and we'll call the meeting back to order and move on to Agenda Item Nine, Iowa Assessments with Mr. Johanning Meyer.
Yeah, currently in our school district, we take assessments at two times during the year, the fall norming period for the middle school and high school, and the spring term for elementary, so they just started today, correct? Yep, and welcome, Snow addition to that, I'm sure made that go real smooth. Those are all the things that, you know, we deal with with these tests. Remember that these tests are one-time snapshot, and they're not necessarily how we teach everything every day, but they are a way that the government keeps track of us and all those things. If you recall your information from the site visit, they said we were doing things well we still needed to improve, we still need to keep on top of curriculum, the Iowa Core and those things, and make sure that we have ample opportunities for our children, especially look at our special ed numbers and our, the way that we do business with special ed. So I'm just going to give you a quick rundown, basically where we're at right now. What you have to remember about these numbers, they are going to be different than what's reported at the end of the year after the beds report, because these don't include full academic year students, they'll be taking out ones that we don't teach for a whole year. If they're not in our system for a whole year between test to test, they don't count against us or for us. We only look at our kids. And then we, I haven't done any of the aggregation out of that yet either because out of the beds reports, I got to look at different things, people that may have gone off free and reduced lunch and all those things. But when we look at how we're doing, if you just take a quick rundown, I tried to do it by grade level just so you can see where we're at. Looking at current grade levels, if you look at our ninth graders, 94% of them were proficient in math, 85% of them were proficient in reading, and 82% of them were proficient in science, meaning on a norm reference test, they scored as good as 94% of the people. So when you're looking at those scores, they're okay, could do better, and that's what, you know, that's our goal always. When we look at individually, I just wanted to take a quick moment of your time, is look at some different year-by-year looks at math, reading, and science. If you look at math, as we progress through the years, I went back three years of data, just give us a look at where we're at, and the fire column tells you the percent of increase, meaning, you know, how did we do, did we increase the percentage of kids that are proficient? A lot of this work will come from this, we'll look at what we've been doing as teachers through curriculum process that we've been implementing for five years, looking at the Iowa Core, getting that in our minds, looking at our learning targets, looking at PLCs, looking at student data work, and using that data to formulate our instruction. And whatever method we use to roll that out, what we've been doing in our PLC time is preparing teachers to do this work, getting them the background they need. But anyway, you can see percentages there, and I just want to give you a quick, some quick numbers in comparison so you have an idea where we stand. If you look at the AEA for 2013, 2014, because that's the only data we have, if you compare the AEA data, starting with fifth grade, we had 72.55% of our students were proficient in 2013, the AEA had 77. But as you progress down, if you look at eighth grade, we had 80.92, the AEA average was 75. The AEA average for ninth graders was 78, ours is 81. If you look at 10th grade, the AEA average was 82, ours is 89. And in 11th grade, theirs was 84 for the AEA, ours is 83, if you round it up. So you can see we're right around the AEA, which is either good or bad. We always want to do better, but again, this is a one-time snapshot, so how much time do we spend on this is, you know, a different beast. What we do use this data for is to look at are our learning targets on track, are we doing the right things? Similarly, in reading, you can see how we've progressed through the years, if you look at our 11th graders, we went from 80.98 in 1213, 80.49 in 1314, and our juniors this year are at 85. So as you can see, the grade levels moving, looking at, are getting better, so our targets are there. The numbers on the side again reflect what was the gain from fifth to sixth grade as far as percentage of kids that are proficient. So that's what those numbers indicate, and that will be our gold data that we'll use at the end of the year. And again, just to give you a rundown for AEA purposes, on 1314, for us in sixth grade, we had 76, the AEA average is 72. For seventh grade, we were at 85, they were at 74. We were at 83, they're at 73. We're at 93, they're at 83. We're at 89, they're at 85. And juniors were 80% even. So we're keeping with the rest of the AEA, the trend there. And with science, again, you can look, our numbers are usually higher in science, just by the way we do business. The interesting thing about science is we're still waiting for what was promised five or six, five years ago, I want to say six, but five or six years ago, whether we're going with science standards or they're going to next-generation science. Until that all gets washed out, we don't know where we're at. So we are kind of in a battle with, are we doing structurally what's right for our kids, and that's where we're at with that. So some of our numbers may drop a little bit, but where we're at with our science curriculum, I think is far ahead of that. We're doing the right things, we're looking at next-gen ways, we're looking at different ways to teach things, you know, PBLs and those kinds of things. And just to give you an idea, I think the AEA's were at 83, 81, and 80 for ninth, 10th, and 11th grade. So as you can see, we're right there with the AEA, we're doing okay, always could do better, but again, how much time do you spend on a one-time snapshot of what you're looking at? When you look at the good things that our teachers are doing as far as foreign arts, art curriculum, band, chorus, music, drama, sports, all those things going on, mentorships, all the things that our kids do, this is only a one-time snapshot. So as you keep looking at these numbers, you've got to keep those things in mind, too, what are we doing for our children, and that's what our teachers here have done a very good job on, and will continue to do. You know, we went to the PLC conference and looked at how to look at learning targets, and we have been working on what are the 21st century skills. We've been working on those things for years, and now the teachers are getting those tools, and we're looking at different ways to implement them now through PBLs and things like that. So as we continue on with our curriculum work, hopefully those things won't go away. Questions?
Why in the math and reading does it look like the 2013, 14 has went up from 2012, 13, but the 2014, 15 has went back down?
A lot of those things have to do with the learning targets that we looked at from 12 to 13, and getting those learning targets flipped over, and it could be groups of kids. I didn't share that data with you, if you look at cohort groups of kids, there are different groups, our senior group kind of led the charge there. If you look, if you look at that group through ninth, 10th, 11th, they were doing good work. The seniors last year started a little lower, so they grew. And then that's all, when you look at how much they grow, you always have to look at that. You know, the other interesting thing that we always talk about in our district is our demographics are different. You know, if you go and compare us to most of the schools around here that people want to compare us to, our demographics are not the same. In 2013, 14, we had 15% of our kids were on IEPs. If you dare to go look at other schools that you want to compare us to, people in the community want to compare you to, it's not the same demographics, it's not a fair comparison. And then if you throw our frame reduced, which I gave you copies of, if you look at those, that number, too, I think in 2013, 14, they live at 55%, and it's even higher in the lower elementary. So if you look at those pieces of data, you know, our teachers deserve a lot of kudos for working on those. In the same respect, we also have to keep working on those things with the curriculum, look at ways to implement things that will help those people learn at a higher rate, get them to grow.
Okay, good.
Anything else? All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda Item Ten, preschool. This would be Dr. Cox.
This would be Mrs. Shannon.
Ms. Shannon, okay.
Hi, this is Kara Shannon, and this is Brenda West, she's our preschool teacher currently with our Shared Visions program. Tonight, we want to share with you kind of a Beauty and the Beast story, so a little bit of that. So I'm going to let Brenda start a little bit with some history, real quickly about the Shared Visions because this is her baby, so I'll let her start, and then I'll jump in there with some proposal.
Okay, the Shared Visions program started in 1990, I came in 1991, so I've been in the program for 24 years, and we've served over 300 students, and the families have received early education with no cost. This year, for the first time since I've been here, we knew when we reapplied for the grant, it was a highly competitive grant, and we did not receive it, which was a little bit like we, I wouldn't even have considered that as being an option. We felt like we, I just met with you guys last July and said how we met our accreditation at 100% and 100% plus, and so we tried to question it, and you could talk all night about why they didn't think we had the need here, but they didn't, so we're going forward and being positive, which is what we're going to be doing. So we are, the other thing that I have dealt with for a lot of years is I always have a waiting list as long as my class. I could fill a whole other classroom, and that doesn't count the parents who call me and say, you know, is there a waiting list? And they don't even apply because I, you could apply, that would, you know, I would encourage you to apply, tell them how, and then they'll say, well, how many people are on the list, 17, 18, 19, 20, and they don't even come and apply. So there's a lot of kids out there not being served, and I've always wanted to do something, and we have a lot of vision, this is just making us through a little faster, so.
So tonight, what we're proposing and putting there for an information item in front of you is that we are proposing providing our preschool program using our statewide voluntary preschool funding. Currently, we do have, we are a fiscal agent for that, and we do provide funding to Central and Head Start, and then also ourselves, but we're looking at providing a tuition-free preschool program to many more students, or possibility of many more students. Lots of questions still to be answered. The good thing is, is that we already have a lot of the pieces in place as far as curriculum, assessments, you know, all the handbook, the guidelines, the playground, the space, food service, all those kinds of things are already in place and would meet the statewide voluntary preschool program requirements. And so we feel that that is a really huge plus. One piece is we're hoping to serve, you can serve potentially 20 students in a classroom, there's a cap at 20, so potentially we're looking at serving an additional 60 to 80 students with that potential. And so, I know, it's awesome. Yeah, it's really exciting, and like Brenda said, it just, this has kind of been a vision that we've been talking as a preschool team. We were hoping that it might take place, you know, down the road as we look at some facility changes and building changes and room and more space and that, it's just kind of forcing us to go a little bit quicker, but it's a good problem to have. We are looking, probably offering several sections, it really depends on the enrollment, and we'll potentially do morning, morning and afternoon, that type of thing. Right now, you know, you have to have 10 hours per week on average, so we could look at a four-day, we could look at a five-day, you know, for three hours a day and potentially look at that, too, and have a morning and afternoon. So some of those details are yet to be worked out, but we wanted to definitely fill you in on the information and hopefully have some approval and move forward with that. in on the information and hopefully have some approval and move forward with that, so.
Can I ask some questions about that?
As soon as we're done at the table, yes.
I would like to ask.
Any comments or questions from the board?
And we have, we have met on Thursday. We met with Dr. Cox and Terry, and then we were able to meet with Central, St. John, Head Start. Just the one left to contact and talk to is Megan Boomgarden at IC. But we have met with our other early childhood community partners and filled them in on the information that's potentially out there, so they are aware before any rumors would happen to arise, just to give them some of the facts. So, you know, one need, one area that we felt as a team, a whole early childhood team with our community partners, was we would no longer be able to serve three-year-old preschoolers. So we wouldn't, because we wouldn't have the funding for that, because Shared Visions did cover that, and statewide funding does not cover three-year-olds. And so that might see an increase in our other partners in what, you know, they would be serving potentially more three-year-olds.
You got, have we got the space right there?
We do, you know, we would like more space, but like we said, we were hoping a little bit of better timeline, but right now, we have the two preschool rooms that meet all the guidelines, you know, Brenda's room, and she works with Kim Weigel in there, and so then we also have, and Molly Ott, and then Lynn Feller's room as well. So we could potentially look at using those two spaces though, so it wouldn't be a change.
Perfect.
I guess the decision would have to be made then, if we go over, if there'll be a cap, if we go beyond the sixty to eighty, that we still need to work out those details. But if they go over that, what is, what's going to be kind of our decision as a team as far as will we put a cap on it or not?
It's wonderful.
Yeah, we're really excited about it, just happening pretty quickly.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's tough when you, when they made us a competitive process, you know, and the good thing is sixty-seven's Shared Vision programs did get the funding. So there are people that are getting the need that they, are getting what they need. We just happen to be not one of them. But finding out in early March is kind of a difficult time, I know, so makes us move a little bit quicker.
Do you want to come up, Nancy, and ask your question or comments?
Okay, because I do have two granddaughters.
Keep coming.
You've got to come to the microphone.
You've got to come up to the microphone.
It should be on TV.
I gave your name.
Right. So they would have to be, so you're not going to have three, I know that New Hampton's been doing this for a long time, so that's, I used to teach in New Hampton, and I know that they have quite a good preschool program, but, so three-year-olds will not be included, but four-year-olds, by what date will they have to be four?
September fifteenth.
Okay, so if they're not, if they're just, if they're just before or just after that, they would come the next year, they would apply the next year?
September fourteenth, they wouldn't be eligible.
Kara?
If they were September fourteenth, they wouldn't be eligible.
Okay, right.
We're going to get nice and close here.
Okay. And so then, so I'm looking at my granddaughters, so they wouldn't be ready quite next year because their birthday is at the end of September. But, so if they're going to TLC, you know, will you have transportation like to, or will they have to use the taxi to get, like, the next year if they're at TLC and they want to go for the preschool for part of it? Will there be transportation to get them from TLC over to your school?
Yep, that's a great question, and we actually had talked about that as a preschool team a little bit. We still need to work out that detail for sure on the transportation.
Because it would be really good if you had some way, otherwise, you know, that's what would have to happen.
Yeah, and I'll just say now, we use the taxi a lot, and they work very well with us, because we have to legally get them off and put them on, and it works very well for the current families.
And I think it is so good, because people have always said, what do you have to do to qualify? You know, before, they had to have an IEP or they had to have something. But there are kids, my granddaughters are getting a good preschool at TLC right now, but what would, it would be a good benefit to have that along with that. And there are kids that aren't going to anything because they really can't afford it. So we know how important preschools are.
Twenty percent of kids entering kindergarten this year did not have preschool.
At all.
At all.
Really?
That was, that was in our grant, that was, we had all that in there. And some of those were not necessarily just Charles City residents, some of them were ones that perhaps might have moved in in August or September, you know, and that kind of thing, but.
And so you're not trying to take away from the other preschools, but you want to get, I think the thing that you really want to have is a consistent preschool that more kids are going to have. So when they come to you for kindergarten, they've had the same things. Because when they're, in New Hampton, they've all had basically the same preschool when they're coming in.
And we won't, I mean, we'll still have St. John and Central and IC and Head Start.
You still will, but probably not as many four-year-olds.
I don't know, it's hard to say.
Depends whether they have to come.
We don't know, this is all new.
Right. So yes, you do have to get that out there, because people are already signing up.
That's why we're here tonight.
Yeah, right. So I think it's, I think it's, I think it's wonderful, and we need to use that state money to get what we need.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Look forward to more progress reports in months to come.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item twelve, budget reductions for fiscal twenty fifteen dash sixteen. That would be you.
That is. So before you is the recommended list of budget cuts and the information on early retirements and how some savings will be realized there. So the proposal, we are targeting three hundred thirty thousand dollars worth of cuts. The recommendation is to eliminate the extended contract, which is forty-seven days for curriculum, reduction in force of the curriculum instructor, reduce extended contract for technology from twenty-three days to ten, reduction in force of the ninth-grade girls' basketball coach, production in force of the seventh-grade wrestling coach, production in force of the department chairs, reduce the long-term subbing rate to BA Step One, eliminating one bus route, reduction in force of the shared math program with Nashville Plainfield, reduction enforced of a part-time high school art teacher, and then reduction in force of high school library assistant, taking that down to five hours per day. That would generate a hundred twenty-four thousand, seven hundred two dollars in savings. And then through early retirements and how that will be restaffed, there's an additional one hundred ninety-three thousand, nine hundred forty-two dollars of savings, for a total of three hundred eighteen thousand, six hundred forty-four.
Still a little short.
It's still a little short, and there are some, we have some instructional assistants that are currently long-term subs. We have some positions that won't be refilled for the next year, and there still is, you know, at least three months' worth of potential movement of existing staff who may be taking jobs elsewhere due to professional advancement and other life circumstances.
I have a question about, oh, shoot, hang on, this touchscreen just slid. Trying to get it back, okay. On the technology, reduce the extended contract for technology from twenty-five days to ten days, that's summertime, is that the summertime?
Yeah.
Are we going, is, will we have, will we be able to take care of all our technology with that reduction? You know, I realize that April and her staff, you know, do an awesome job, but we've got technology laden with all these computers, so I, I just have a question about that.
It will be more challenging.
Yeah.
It was a way to save an additional four thousand ninety-two dollars.
Yeah.
But if you prefer to pull that, we just find it from somewhere else.
Well, I don't know, does anybody else have an opinion on that?
I haven't heard, I mean, this has been something that's been on the reduction list from the beginning.
Correct.
It's nothing new. All I can go by is from feedback, and I haven't had any feedback, so I don't.
Yeah.
But it seemed, just like you said, and it seemed to me like last year when we got our Chromebooks on, we were out there, they were way over, way behind on getting computers ready to go back to school. Then, last year, what's it going to be like if we reduce the staff?
It'll be more challenging.
More challenging for me.
You have to cut somewhere, and that's the thing.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with that. I just, I just wondered what, if they were behind before, what's, are they going to have to work harder?
Well.
Or find another way.
Or, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, unless.
Pool stuff, of course. The analysis in our packet here with the three different scenarios, is the twelve-month cost scenario the one that's currently built into the recommended reductions?
The pool is not on the recommended reduction list tonight.
Okay.
It's recommended that you take the next twelve months to figure out what is the long-term plan. And so there is a four-month, a six-month, and a twelve-month expense showing, and it would be important for the board, and you don't have to do that tonight, you can do that in April, you can do it in May, but before we get to the summer, to figure out, is it most cost-effective and programming-effective to keep it open for four months, or six months, or twelve months?
And that decision for the coming year would have some bearing on our budget cut decision, I assume, based on the analysis given, is that accurate? If it was a six-month decision?
Well, not for this year, we're going to, this is for...
Potentially for the coming year, right?
It could add to cost savings if we were to implement either a four or a six month for the next fiscal year.
So twenty to thirty thousand dollars worth of savings could be realized there?
And again, that decision could be made.
Could be made in the next month or two.
So does the August one to November thirtieth timeframe for the pool being open, that covers us for girls' swimming?
Correct.
And then the, the middle school physical education could have used the pool during that time period for their swimming. Shift whatever time they normally do into that timeframe while there's water in the pool.
Right. Or you could extend it to six months, because we do, we've got the YMCA that uses it, we've had Winter Olympics and some other kayaking-type activities that take place in January, you've got December PBIS reward-type activities that take place in the pool. So if you wanted to extend it out for six months, you could.
At a cost of another nine thousand.
Right.
Are there anything, is there anything on the list that if we chose a six-month option and realized a twenty-six thousand dollars saving, that you would take off of the list? Are you comfortable with what you have recommended? Is that?
I wouldn't until we're done settling. Because right now, we're, we're just anticipating, we need this much.
And if that number goes higher, then, yeah.
And conversely, if the number's lower, then some more of these things could be reinstated.
Yep.
So the recommendation from the administration, correct me if I'm wrong, is to proceed with the three hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, three hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars worth of cuts as presented?
Correct.
I'll make a motion that we accept the budget reduction as presented by the administration.
Is there a second?
Second that.
Been moved and seconded to proceed with the budget cut plan as presented by the administration. Any further discussion? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote.
Deit?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Crispy?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. I would guess that depending upon negotiations and other things coming up in the next couple of months, we may have the pool back on the agenda, or for conversation.
Certainly.
Certainly.
Yep.
Or some of these things.
And you may be able to pull some of these.
Or some of these other things could come off.
Right.
Or we may have to add to them.
Or we may have to add to.
A lot of work being done for...
But what is our deadline to notify staff of?
April thirtieth.
So that timeline is fast approaching.
Uh-huh.
To notify staff of any reduction. So the only thing left after April thirtieth would be some of the pooled time, if we need to.
Wouldn't be staff.
Huh?
Couldn't be staff.
Can't be staff after April thirtieth.
No, that's what he's saying.
Well, it can't be existing staff.
Can't be existing staff.
But.
If someone were to leave the district, we could choose not to replace them.
Correct.
If we needed to. I mean, I just want to make sure that we all understand our options out there depending upon financial need in the future.
Right.
And maybe that time will be closer to negotiations, settle it too.
Maybe, and give an opportunity.
Because April fourteenth, we go into media.
Yeah.
You know, I'm just, I'm just looking back at one of the old lists and comparing, and there's a lot that you've removed from the list and that you've been able to save, you know, from, from cutting. And, you know, a lot of that is things that directly impact students in the classroom, teachers in the classroom, and so, you know, I'm comfortable with what you've put together and a good starting point.
But remember, any and all of those things that we saw originally.
I know, could come back.
Could and would be back on the potential table a year from now or in the future if additional cuts are needed.
Exactly.
Yeah, right.
Just because they didn't show up tonight doesn't mean that they're safe forever.
The list is already formulated.
Yes, pretty much. That's the way it's.
Okay, moving on. Early retirement applications for support staff.
We had just one application from Deb Downing, and the administration recommends that the board accept her application for early retirement, and on behalf of the board and the community, administration expresses deep gratitude and appreciation to her for her tireless work on behalf of the students of the Charles City Community School District.
I'll make a motion to, to echo Dr. Cox's sentiment on thanking her for her many years of service and accepting her resignation, her early retirement, excuse me.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the early retirement of Deb Downing and express the deep gratitude and appreciation of the district for their tireless work on behalf of the students of the district. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Crispy?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Deit?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Agenda item fourteen, set the date and time for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen certified budget hearing.
So April thirteenth at six thirty PM here in the middle school cafeteria is the date and time of the public hearing concerning the two thousand fifteen, sixteen certified budget.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the date and time for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen certified budget hearing.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Are we, Terry, are we, are you presenting the new budget with the worst-case scenario that will get in zero state aid, supplemental saving?
Right, the one that I showed you at the last meeting.
Okay.
But there'll be an action coupled down to actually approve that. This is just to set the public hearing.
Okay.
All right. So it's been moved and seconded to have the public hearing on Monday, April thirteenth, two thousand fifteen, at six thirty PM in the middle school cafeteria. Have a roll call vote, please.
Crispy?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Deit?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Set the date and time for amending the two thousand fourteen, fifteen certified budget.
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Deit?
Yes. Motion carried five to zero. Set the date and time for amending the 2014-15 certified budget. Amendment for Monday, April 13 at 6:30 PM in the middle school cafeteria.
I'll make a motion that we have the, set the time and date for the 2015-16 certified budget hearing on April 13.
The 14-15.
Oh, yeah, 14-15, excuse me, and on April 13, 2015, at 6:30 PM in the middle school cafeteria.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to set the time and date for amending the certified budget. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Deit?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Agenda Item 16, the 2015-16 certified budget publication.
You want to take that one?
Uh, sure. The recommendation is to, we would publish what we presented at the last meeting, which was a property tax rate of 13.86 cents per thousand and a surtax rate of 7%. If the supplemental state aid is more than zero, then we may be able to decrease that. So, but we're, we're publishing it, worst-case scenario.
Because we can't go higher than what we publish.
Correct, yep.
Motion to approve the 2015-16 certified budget publication as recommended.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to certify the budget publication as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Wintering?
Yes.
Deit?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Agenda Item 17, the 2014-15 certified budget amendment publication.
I am recommending amending the budget. I think I spoke of that potential at the last meeting, but more specifically, what I am recommending is that we increase our support services certified budget line by $368,000, and then in turn, decrease the other expense by that same amount, or approximately the same amount. You know, when we set the budget, it's all an estimate, and decisions are made, things change, and that's why I need to fine-tune that, because we can't overspend in a certain category.
So, basically, this is just transferring funds from one account to the other, basically?
It's not, it's not a transfer, but, yeah.
Budget transfer.
It's a budget transfer between categories.
Okay.
But there's no money movement, it's just...
It's just increasing one category to make sure that we're in compliance with the law.
Right.
The money's there.
Yeah. You know, the total is still the same.
Great. Motion to approve the 2014-15 certified budget amendment publication as presented.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to approve the certified budget amendment publication as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Deit?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Agenda Item 18, budget guarantee resolution. It is published in our packet.
We need to approve this resolution, otherwise, we won't be able to get the cash reserve in order to cover the budget guarantee amount. So, the resolution just reads that resolve that the Board of Directors of the Charles City Community School District will levy property tax for the fiscal year 2015-16 for the regular program budget adjustment as allowed under Section 257.14 Code of Iowa. Our budget guarantee for next year, if 0% supplemental state aid was approved, is $404,150.
Again, worst-case scenario, hopefully.
Right.
Hopefully.
I move to approve the budget guarantee resolution.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the budget guarantee resolution. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Deit?
Yes. Motion carried five to zero. Agenda Item 19, consideration of consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented by the administration.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. We'll have a roll call vote, please.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Deit?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Agenda Item 20, important upcoming dates.
One that's not listed, CYAC, is next Wednesday, April 1. We have prom April 11, and then the next board meeting is April 13. Yeah, I mentioned that at the beginning. I'll mention it again. Todd Pritchard will be hosting an event in the Charles City Library on Tuesday, March 31st, at 5:00 PM, and all school employees invited to attend.
Also, on Wednesday, April 14, there'll be mediation with that 4 o'clock at the 4:30 here.
Just for the committee, yep.
But it's, it's a closed session.
It's closed, yeah. And then, don't forget the Academy of Board Leadership. We get points for going to that, too?
Yes.
Do we have time for that?
On the 22nd.
Uh huh.
What else are we doing then?
I believe it's 5:30.
Thank you.
Oh, do we have a time, I'm sorry.
Some of us have enough credits.
Some of us are close.
We're achievers over there.
So, hearing and seeing no other business to come before the board, we will adjourn at 8:55, 8:54.